Is, consider applicants for city council. And Sharon, were you gonna put something up? There we go, okay. Did you wanna go through this, or did you want me to? You let me do this, okay, great, thanks.
It's alright, I'm there.
So, you know, the vacancy process, um, let me skip up to that. So transparent, fair, inequitable, uh, the names and applications of applicants were released to the public. The interview process and questions were also released, and each applicant is asked the same questions and given the same time limit. So, uh, just to reiterate, the, um, when the vacancy came up, we followed the guidelines set forth by Charter Ordinance number twenty-seven and the governing body rules of procedure, and we began the appointment process for a new council member. There was a vacancy advertised in print and social media with an application deadline of December twentieth. We also hold over applications for, I believe, up to a year, um, and if you're interested, you can resubmit that same application. And, um, we were, there were six original applicants, and they were reviewed by the governing body. Uh, one has decided to take his name out of the running, so we now, we're down to five. And we're at the point then where we will do the, uh, public interviews at the city council meeting. And, uh, again, this is public knowledge, this has been out for a while, but the process we're gonna go through tonight, we're gonna go in, uh, alphabetical order, my last name. And each applicant will provide a two-minute opening statement, which will include the attributes they believe would bring to the city council and how they have prepared for the position. And we will be keeping a time, um, city clerk will keep the time, and I apologize ahead of time, I don't wanna be rude, but we'll cut you off at your time limit, so it's fair to everyone. And, um, the governing body, which probably me, will ask a standard set of three questions there below, and the governing body will then be afforded several follow-up questions to that. And then finally, the applicant will provide a one-minute closing statement. Um, after that, we will all be given our tally sheets, and we will rank, uh, our choices, one through three, one being their, our top choice, and, what's that, is it one through five? I think we're only ranking one through three, though.
No, one through five.
Is it one through five? Okay.
If consensus is reached on that first, then they're going for the second.
Right, if we get consensus of, of three ones, then there's no, and if we do not, then we will go through a second, we'll take the top three out of that, and then we'll rank those, uh, one through three, that's fine. So, that being said. Okay, I think we are ready. Does council have any questions before we start? No? Alright, so we will start with, uh, David Arnold. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Three moment stand, right here?
Yes.
Alright.
Please speak into the microphone, too, so that...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there are people probably watching, uh, through livestream.
Okay. Uh, you want me to just dive right on in?
You bet, you got, uh, two minutes?
Alright, uh, hello, my name is David Arnold. Uh, my wife and I moved to the city of Gardner back in two thousand and twelve. Uh, we've since become homeowners and have started a family here in Gardner. Uh, our oldest son is a student at Sunflower Elementary, and our second son is about ten months old. Um, I've also started a small business, um, while living here in Gardner. Uh, Gardner is our home, this is where we live, this is where we intend on staying. As we continue to grow as a family, we find it increasingly important to help ensure that Gardner grows and prospers and remains safe as a community. I have spent the last six years in the planning and development industry of both residential and commercial properties. Uh, I currently work for an engineering firm that implements these plans for residential and commercial properties, as well as roads, highways, and bridges. Uh, during my time in these positions, I've developed relationships with several builders, developers, and others in the Johnson County area, and I feel that my employment experience and relationships could help bridge any gaps that the city may have in terms of community planning.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead and go into the questions. What are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years, and what steps need to be taken to address them?
Uh, so the first issue, uh, that I would like to address is the raising of staff salaries. Uh, low staff salaries contribute to a high turnover rate, and the loss of police officers, linemen, and, and others, um, city employees. The best way to help address this is by raising pay, but to raise pay, we would need to focus on what I see as the second issue facing the city, which is community growth with new developments, both in residential and commercial areas. Uh, to address the issues of growth, I would say that it is important to get a clear understanding from both developers and builders where and what the issues are, and why Gardner does not seem to get the attention from some of the bigger developers and some of the bigger developer, or, I'm sorry, uh, builders, um, in the Johnson County area. Uh, once we can get a clear understanding of their issues, then the city might be able to adjust accordingly where able to get the developers and builders more interested in investing in with the city of Gardner. Uh, the third issue that I see the city facing is infrastructure. Uh, infrastructure may be one of the major factors related to community growth. The solution to this may lie with the joint effort between the city and the developers to determine what is needed to interest them investing more in our community. If infrastructure is part of the issue, we could jointly determine what needs to be done, what prices may look like, and maybe come to a solution that benefits both the city and the developers. Additionally, the current infrastructure needs to be properly maintained without increasing the tax burden on existing residents of Gardner. It is also very important for Gardner to offer the same level of quality infrastructure that we may find in other surrounding communities.
Thank you, David. Okay, question number two, identify three priorities of the city.
And so that kinda ties back into, uh, my answers, uh, for question number one. And those three, uh, priorities that I see the city facing is going to be, uh, increasing in the staff pay, community growth, and the infrastructure.
Finally, where do you see the city in five to ten years?
That's kind of a loaded question, I think. Um, you know, the, the city's gonna grow, one way or the other. Uh, the question is, how do we want Gardner to grow? Um, I believe that with proper city planning and the right partnerships, the city can ensure that the right neighborhoods are built to allow for the city to grow into a desirable community, such as, uh, other places near Gardner, um, other communities, other cities, stuff of that nature.
Thank you. Okay, um, council, do you have questions? Mr. Arnold?
I have a couple of questions, uh, David. First one is, you had mentioned that you were, that you had started a business here in Gardner. What's the, can you disclose what the nature of the business is?
Uh, I am a federal firearms licensee, so I buy, trade, and sell firearms.
Okay, great. And then the other question I had for you is, uh, you were discussing, um, issues around, uh, you know, growth and infrastructure improvements. Uh, what do you think are the biggest, uh, hindrances and opportunities regarding the east side of I-35?
So, I-35 on the east side, I don't really see too many issues of what's going on over there. You, you've got a nice amount of land, you've got the area to expand. I, I see that being a great opportunity to be able to push that expansion even farther.
Okay.
I, I have two questions.
Go ahead, Joy.
Okay. Um, so my first question is, what made you interested now versus filing, uh, to run for election that we just had in November?
So... That's kind of a loaded one as well, it's... I don't have a very valid answer for that one. I've wanted to be on the city council for a while, it's just always been one of those, is now the right time to pull the trigger and go for it and try? Honestly speaking, I think that this gives me the ability to be able to get in here, see what it's like, and understand that before investing that time and investing the money and investing the effort to, to make that run.
Okay. My follow-up question is, um, it says you've attended a city council meeting, but other than that, I don't know if it was virtual or if it was in person. Uh, what other preparations have you done, studying, et cetera, to ready yourself in case you are appointed?
Um, so I've not been in person in Gardner. Through, uh, past employment and whatnot, I've been through city council meetings, uh, Olathe, Overland Park, Lenex, I've been there. Um, and so, I'm kinda coming from it at a different angle as being up here, being able to propose plans and, and stuff of that nature, versus being on, you know, your side of the fence there. Um, so for me, being able to be exposed to that has kinda given me the ability to see how things work, what the proper way of the channels are.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick on that, Dave, uh, you mentioned you, you have the firearms business, are, are you still doing any of the other, uh, business as well?
I'm sorry?
Are you still working with developers and, and, and that business as well, or?
Yes, yeah, so the, the federal firearms license, that's just kind of a, a side job.
Sure.
So evenings, weekends, when I have the time for that. Uh, but main employment, full-time employment, too much full-time employment is spent, um, doing the engineering and, and working on, uh, what I do now is I'm taking the, uh, proposed plans, and we're taking those and implementing those, and I'm creating 3D models out of that with the roads and everything, and subdivisions of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If you don't get appointed tonight, would you be willing to serve on other committees or boards?
Yeah, I would be, um, and specifically, I've got a lot of interest in the, um, planning commission, because that really deals a lot with what I do. So I think that even if not brought on to the city council, I would be able to a, a, at least extend a hand and help where, where I could, so.
Okay, thank you, and, um, do you have one minute for a closing statement?
Alright, just kinda recap, uh, I have been in the community for almost ten years. As I've said, uh, this is our home, uh, we do intend on staying in Gardner. Again, because of my employment background, I feel that I bring experience and professional connections to the table in regard to helping the community grow and recognize any hurdles that may appear while growing. I feel that I would be a valuable addition to the city council. I wanna thank you all for hearing me and giving me the opportunity, uh, to become a part of the great team that we've got up here right now.
Thank you, thank you very much, David.
Thank you, David, sir.
Okay, next up will be, uh, Nathaniel Plon.
How we doing?
Evening.
Um, I guess, uh, opening statement, uh, my wife and I moved here two years ago, originally from Colorado and started, uh, work brought me over here working for Cerner, been Overland Park, and Olathe, and everything. Grown family brought us here to Gardner, we were looking for a place, and found that Gardner was just exactly what we were looking for, for everything, for a city, for community, and all that stuff. And I just wanna see Gardner keep that charm that it has now while going into the future and not lose it, so.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so, um, what are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years, and what steps need to be taken to address them?
Uh, I'd say one of the biggest issues, you know, talking to friends and people in, you know, in my neighborhood and stuff, one of the biggest issues is, like, utility options. I mean, no, you have like one option, or only a couple options for internet, for different, you know, utilities for our community and stuff, they're just, the options are just not there. And I don't know if it's reaching out to different companies, I know there's, uh, a company that just is putting in fiber optics in Spring Hill and stuff, I'm working with those companies to see if, if they're able to come here, and opening up those channels. But that's probably one of the biggest issues, you know, dealing with, you know, I talked to in my neighborhood and community. Another one is, you know, growth and housing. Here we have, you know, Gardner's great, but it's all, the prices are going up for housing, people are starting not to be able to afford it. You know, we don't see much for apartments, you know, maybe some housing and stuff that more people, you know, my son is eleven, you know, in, in ten years, when he gets out on his own, is he gonna be able to afford something? You know, I remember my first house, you know, was a two-bedroom apartment with a roommate, you don't see anything like that around here. Um, and then, you know, keeping infrastructure and roads and stuff, keep, I don't wanna see traffic, you know, along fifty-six, you know, get, be deadlocked, you know, how do we work with keeping traffic reasonable, you're not jammed up in certain areas, you know? But that would be a planning and zoning thing on how do we, you know, do the roads. I don't know, I don't have a good answer for that right now, but that, I could see that coming in the next five to ten years being an issue.
Alright, thank you, uh, identify three priorities of the city.
Again, growth, uh, you know, housing and growth, infrastructure, and then businesses, you know? We got, the way Gardner's laid out, we have all of our small businesses allow, along Main Street and, you know, fifty-six. We're growing out to the west, we're growing out to the east, but there is nothing out there. Some people out near, you know, Centennial Park, you know, it takes a while for them to have to go to the grocery store, we only have one. Is there a place we can put another grocery store, is there other zoning and stuff we can put in, some gas stations in some other stores and other areas of the city? It's something to look into, but as we grow, we can't have everything concentrated in that one spot. We need to look into how we wanna design the city.
Thank you. And where do you see the city in five to ten years, speaking of designing it?
I see the city in five to ten years, hopefully, keeping that's the same charm that brought me and my wife here. Um, a very community-oriented city, you know, where people, everyone knows everyone, but yet still, you know, the good growth, um, that brings all those people here. Um, I see it, you know, I, what were we, twenty-two percent growth in the last census? Another five to ten years, you know, another, if we keep on that, another twenty-two percent, you know, we're talking some pretty decent growth, you know? I wanna see us, in five to ten years, I see us, the feel as we are now, just a, a larger, closer community.
Okay, uh, city council, we have some follow-up questions.
Well, I'll, I'm gonna answer, ask my same ones to everybody, so. Uh, what made you interested now versus filing and running in the November election that we just had?
I did not know there was an opening in the November election.
Okay.
Um, and when I saw the post on Facebook for this opening, I thought, you know, I talked to my wife, and, you know, is this something, I don't see major issues with the city, I just wanna see the city keep what it's got and get, and, as it grows, and so it wasn't, you know, like, I've gotta run, it's like, well, maybe I have something to contribute.
Okay, and my, my follow-up question was, um, what have you done to prepare yourself if you were appointed? I see that you haven't been to a city council meeting, have you watched them online, have you read minutes and attended, et cetera?
I've watched them online, read minutes, um, my job with Cerner is an, uh, interface engineer and stuff, I do a lot of, you know, scrums and collaborative stuff for problem solving. Um, you know, we have to get together with issues, or this is what we're wanting to do moving forward, what is the best way to do that, so, you know, working collaborative with a group is what I do every day in and day out, so. You know, a committee-type thing is not much different on something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I got a couple of questions. Um, first one is, uh, you mentioned that you came with your family from Colorado about two years ago, correct? Is that right, a little bit more than two years ago?
Uh, I came from Colorado, uh, five years ago.
Five years ago, my apologies.
Moved to Gardner two years ago.
Two years ago, okay, so you, you lived for three years in other areas of the metro, then?
Mm-hmm, uh, Overland Park and Olathe.
Okay, great. Um, so, what, what brought you here from Colorado, was it the Cerner job that brought you here?
Yes.
And, uh, why Gardner?
Why Gardner, because, um, as we, I have three kids, we actually had to move from Olathe because of the birth of our, uh, youngest, and we had a two-bedroom, needing a three-bedroom. Gardner provided, you know, we looked up some of the best schools in the area. You know, the housing was affordable for what we sold our house in Olathe to move here, you know, we got much better bang for our buck. And after we moved here, you know, the two years has just been, we've literally fallen in love with the city. I mean, the Fourth of July parade, the, you know, how that, that, you know, the, the fair, the Greenway event that we had a few years ago, we, all the little events and stuff for the commu, that just bring the community together, it's just been amazing, I've just fell in love with the city.
Okay, and that, that kinda brings me into the another, the other question. You had mentioned about five, five years from now, having a, a bigger but a closer community, having a place where people wanna gather and be a part of things, uh, and, and that kinda dovetails into, you mentioned the Greenway, I was gonna mention our downtown revitalization, so we've got a downtown project right now that's, uh, that we're looking for investors and things like that. But you had mentioned, from your IT background, you, you're very much into networking, you do scrumming, scrums and things like that. Uh, I'm from the IT world as well, but my, the question I had was, what do you think is the strengths and weaknesses of our downtown? And how would you improve on it?
The weaknesses would be space. Um, you know, we're already, it's already a lot of established stuff, and trying to adjust that for today's, you know, the way things are today with traffic and stuff like that, that would be the weakness. The plus that we have is the charm, you know, the, you know, all the buildings are in good condition, we have, there's a lot of bones to work with to revitalize that and make it look like something that, you know, it's got all the, the new stuff, but when people go down, you know, a lot of people, they go down, you know, a city like this, and it, it holds that old-world charm of when the city was founded, but it's got the, you know, the new businesses and the, you know, people walking up and down the street. That's what about, you know, Gardner that I love and what I wanted to s- keep.
I like, I like your frankness in your response, thank you.
Done, done.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
If you're not appointed tonight, will you serve on other boards and committees?
Yes, I'd be willing to do that.
Great. One eight, uh, got one minute then to, uh...
Um, I guess my closing would be, uh, my appreciation for hearing me out. I love this city and just want to do everything I can to, to help, and if I'm not the best candidate here today, it's no hard feelings, and hopefully I'll be able to serve on something else at another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathaniel.
Okay, next candidate is Eric Potter.
Good evening.
Evening, Eric.
Your room looks a lot bigger on video.
So, so do I.
What's that?
So do I.
I'm not even gonna comment to mine. My name is Eric Potter, my wife and I moved here to Gardner two and a half years ago. We moved to the KC Metro in two thousand and seventeen, December, for business opportunities for my wife. Um, what brought us here to Gardner was that business opportunity, she was supposed to go into partnership in a restaurant in Gardner. I'm not gonna disclose which one, I wanna keep their business private. But that's one of the reasons we moved to Gardner. The other reason we moved to Gardner is because we liked, like other candidates have said, the, the community presence and the, um, I hate to be cliche, but the small-town atmosphere of being able to talk to your neighbors, the, uh, welcoming nature of everyone that we've met here, people that have been here all their lives to people that have been here for two years. Um, we just liked the atmosphere of Gardner. What drives me to this position, this opportunity, is the opportunity to protect what makes Gardner great, while at the same time incorporating ideas that will make the community stronger and better. I have worked with business owners for twenty years in my financial services practice. Um, I have run businesses for the last three decades, several different types of businesses, so I have a unique perspective on not only running my business, but having worked with other businesses and professionals in other arenas, as well as running retail and other types of businesses. My goal would be to leverage my experiences over the last thirty years to service our city in a way that's going to make us better ultimately for the years to come.
Thank you, you did time me as well.
I was in radio.
Alright, thank you. So, what are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years, and what steps need to be taken to address them?
I had to narrow my list down. And I know that, that there are a couple of different things that have been, um, addressed and will be addressed in the coming, uh, year or so. The Gardner I-35 interchange is horrible. I'm hoping that the changes to come aren't gonna make it worse, but I, I know that's a concern. Um, also, Main Street is, uh, about two degrees above cobblestone, and I understand that's also gonna be addressed here in the next little while. I just have to get my car, to, tires changed every month. Um, the, um, prospect, the, the projected growth going on at, uh, one-seventy-five, and I know it's a project that's not started yet, the Camber Way Fair, or whatever the road is, and then on the other side of I-35, is gonna bring in a ton of new residents. And I don't think the other side of I-35 has been annexed by Gardner yet, but, oh, it has been? Okay, so that's gonna add to the downward pressure on the services that we provide as a city, firefighters, police, and infrastructure as well. The other concern would be everybody coming off, off of that development there, coming onto I-35, is also gonna put a lot of downward pressure on, at the right time of day, it's a pain to get onto I-35 or off anyways. Um, so I think that those are three of the biggest issues that we have facing us in the next coming two or three years.
So then identify three priorities of the city.
I think the three priorities in the city come down to safety, security, meaning firefighter services, police services, and infrastructure services, electrical, water, um, all those things. We need to provide competitive compensation and tools for all those people to do their jobs properly and to be satisfied in their jobs, and, and we're able to retain them. Um, I think that the other, uh, priority, one of the other priorities, is to provide a business-friendly environment that is low in taxes in nature to encourage businesses to move in and residents to start new businesses in this area, and again, retain the employees of those businesses so that we keep more of our money local. And I think, again, the biggest, one of the biggest priorities for the city moving forward is infrastructure. If we can't maintain and stay ahead by building new infrastructure as we expand, there is not gonna be any efficient expansion. There are certain, you can't just go back and rebuild infrastructure in such a way to accommodate what's already been built without undoing too many things, which just adds to the cost.
And where do you see the city in five to ten years?
Gardner's one of the greatest cities in the metro. Um, like I said before, we love everything about it, we, we've, you know, planted ourselves here for many reasons. The growth is going to happen whether or not people want it to, and that's just a, a matter of fact. And again, going back to building out the infrastructure, trying to get ahead of it, is going to help ease that. I think is also we can, um, create Gardner, the downtown in, in particular, in such a manner that it's a draw for people to come in from other areas of the county and other surrounding counties. It's, as was alluded to earlier, it's one of the greatest downtowns in the area. But it's a bunch of unlocked potential at this point. There's a lot of vacancies that I think could be inhabited by a lot of great small businesses. And I think that if we really focus on fostering a small-business environment in the downtown, it's going to become an area that people wanna come to, just like Parkville or Baldwin or some of the other surrounding communities, where it's not just simply somewhere that people live and then they go to Olathe to do stuff, they live here and they do the stuff here, and they come from Olathe, 'cause I mean, everybody's in downtown Olathe, it's wonderful. They come here to spend their time and spend their days and make their memories with their kids.
Great, thank you. Okay, council, questions do you have?
Troy, do you wanna start with yours?
Well, I will. Uh, so my question is, what made you interested now instead of, uh, running for election?
My wife.
In November. Oh, okay. And you still have your wife, correct?
Yes. Yeah, she, um, wasn't real interested in me to work for, to run in the conversation we've had. Um, when the opportunity came up and we discussed it, she says, okay, it's, you know, go ahead and, and go after it.
Okay, and, um, it says that you haven't been to a city council meeting. What have you done to prepare yourself if you are appointed?
I have read the notes, watched the online. Um, I've talked with no intention of ever running for city council initially, but I've talked to the members of the community to gauge what it is that is needed here, you know? Wha- what's great about Olathe or about Gardner and what's, um, needed? And at the end of the day, as a sitting council member, you're representing your neighbors. And that's where I feel that's the, the biggest, uh, responsibility is representing with those who may live.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, it's, I kinda feel it's either my job to kinda go a little deeper. So, um, you mentioned that you had been here for about two years and you came here from, uh, where did you come from?
We moved in, uh, bought our house in July of, of nineteen. And before that, we lived in Olathe from December seventeen to July. Uh, before that, we were in Florida.
In Florida?
Tired of not having snow and ice. My wife has offered a, a business opportunity up here and that's what got us transferred up here.
I moved up from Florida for a job too, so, yeah, I understand the, the pull. Um, so, so, uh, I'm gonna ask you what I asked, uh, what I asked Nathaniel, why Gardner? Why, why, why Gardner? Have any place in the metro? We looked at a lot of places too.
After living in Olathe, honestly, I didn't care for that bigger suburban environment. Um, Overland Park was not, again, not our flavor. We looked at all kinds of places all over the place. Her business was gonna go in here, uh, still might, I don't know. Um, and so when we started looking seriously around Gardner, we, again, we just loved the way the community was set up and you know, you could have your choice of whatever kinda home you wanted to have, um, with a reasonable price. Um, and I mean, the house that we have frankly is beyond anything we ever dreamt of having. Um, so it was just meant to be.
Okay, and then the, the other question I had is dovetailing into something else you said. Um, you were mentioning amenities and having the ability to keep the, keep the, the money in town.
Yeah.
What, where is the point at which your amenities become to the point where we become like a suburb like Olathe? Because that's, that's a concern of a lot of people, that we become like Olathe.
Because of the proximity of Olathe and the amenities, especially off one hundred and fifty-fourth street, um, and the way that the, that the city has been designed either naturally or, or by design. Um, I think there's enough property in the outerlying areas where those, uh, strip mall type things can go in. Where, and that's again where my focus is keeping downtown, kind of the sweet spot of the, of the city. Because we, I personally, I don't care that bigger businesses move in downtown. You know, Walmart, that's fine, whatever, you know, the other areas outside of town, I think can be developed to whatever they want. But, um, I don't, I, I don't think that we have to try to mimic what other communities are doing in order to bring people in and retain them here long-term. I mean, if you want that, move to Overland Park. I don't want that. That's why I moved here. And I think there are a lot of people on that same page that have the appreciation for what we have and, you know, we're just close enough that if you got a Home Depot, gotta go to Home Depot, you can, it's ten minutes away. But, you know, I don't think we need a Home Depot in the middle of town, personally.
All right, thanks Eric, appreciate it.
And if not, uh, appointed this evening, would you
Yes.
Serve on other?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Uh, so one minute follow-up? Closing statement?
As I said, I think Gardner's a great, Gardner's a great town. Um, we have the opportunity, assuming I'm in the role, um, as a city council, to protect what makes us a great town and design a future for making the community stronger. And I think that we can adjust as needed and get ahead of things when we see things coming down the road. And I think if we do that, we can keep this town as great as it is, no matter how big it gets.
Thank you. Thank you Eric.
Thank you.
Okay. Our fourth candidate is Mr. John Tramble.
Thank you. Well, my name is John Tramble Jr. Uh, I actually ran for city council. Uh, I placed fourth, so hey, it was an experience, uh, like Theodore Roosevelt said about the man in the arena, you gotta, you know, gotta get in there. Um, moved here in twenty fifteen, rented, but we actually purchased our home in twenty seventeen. Uh, I moved here because of a dog. So, uh, when my wife said, hey, she found a place to rent, she was my fiancee at the time. Uh, I'm like, where the F is Gardner, Kansas? Cause I didn't know. I mean, I was born and raised in KCK. I didn't know what Gardner was, right? We didn't go outside of Winnet County. But living here and as the years progressed, I've grown to really love Gardner. Uh, everything these guys said about the small town feel and everything like that, really appealing. But I also know that Gardner is growing and people want to move here. Because my job as a Realtor, I help people find nice homes in nice neighborhoods, safe neighborhoods, decent schools, things like that. And when they mention Olathe, I always give them the option, hey, have you thought about Gardner? Right? And the answer I usually get is, ew, that's a little far away, but never been to Gardner, don't know where Gardner is, let's take a ride. And they fall in love. So there are some things that needs to be addressed for growth. We'll get to that in about twenty-four seconds, but, uh, I'm just honored to be up here again.
So what are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years?
Everybody say it, infrastructure. Um, it's, it's the thing that everyone wants to point out is that, okay, we got a few roads, we have systems in place, but is it enough to address the coming growth? What are our plans for that? Um, I don't have all the answers, actually very little, but that's where the consensus of the council will come in. How can we best grow and still keep our budget manageable? Um, keep people employed, things like that, so that's it, that's one. Um, two is, I don't know how to actually say this, but it's community, community walkability is what I wanna say. Gardner is big enough, but yet small enough to where there should be sidewalks that you can walk to anywhere. And some of the disjointed sidewalks around town is like, okay, how do they come up with this? All right, you should be able to walk to Price Chopper if you wanted to, no matter where you are in the city, or ride your bike if you wanted to. So we need to make it to where families can get, you know, just enjoy the amenities of Gardner without having to get into a car if they wanted to. Um, with that said, uh, Councilman Baldwin's, um, um, proposal for Centennial Park, that should be for all the parks and future parks that's being built in Gardner. It should be accessible for everyone. Right? Um, and the third thing is, um, my wife's a nurse, so she goes, okay, we don't have any emergency rooms here. Like, well, we have quick care, she says, it's not the same as emergency rooms. There should be services for
Sorry, John.
Okay.
You're close.
Okay.
Uh, identify three priorities in the city.
Uh, infrastructure, of course, like we all said. Uh, we need to get ready for the coming growth, uh, what's Gardner growing at point nine-two percent a year? So that means the junior high school, elementary kids that are in school now will need another high school. So what's the plan for that? You know? Um, there are, if you pay attention, there are plenty of food trucks popping up. All right, part of the things for downtown that's been mentioned should be spaces, they can have a, a sit-down restaurant if they wanna open one, to create more businesses. Um, if you haven't tried the food truck off, off of Gardner Road, you should, they have good food. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's it pretty much.
Okay, thank you.
For running out of time.
And where do you see the city in five to ten years?
Well, like I said, with the growth point nine-two percent a year, we need to be looking to a crystal ball, see how we can get ahead of some things. Um, continue to improve on what we have. Uh, it was mentioned earlier about pay and everything, we need to think outside the box to attract some people. I mean, yeah, okay, we're gonna give them raises, we're gonna do this, but there are things that other companies are being inventive with to keep their employees, to attract employees, so, uh, we need to, to come up with some, some, you know, people might call it strange, but just outside the box ideas on, on, on keeping people, not just money maybe, but something else. That's it.
Great, thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Well, my first question, I can't really ask.
Yes.
So besides running for election, what else have you done to prepare yourself if you're appointed?
Well, uh, prior life, I was in air traffic controller and during my career as an air traffic controller, I was elected, uh, union president three times at two different facilities, so mediation I was taught. You know, I mean, working with some high, uh, type A personalities, if you will. So to have that balance between management and workers taught me a lot. Uh, I'm involved in the community, I'm a member of Rotary, I'm a member of the American Legion. Uh, as a veteran, I feel it's still my duty to serve my country, no matter what capacity I'm in.
Thank you.
Mr. Tramble?
Mr. Trump.
It's, it's nice to see you again and, uh, I, I've been involved with Rotary and functions. I know you have a real heart for the community and like to serve, so.
Thank you.
Uh, my, my, a couple of questions I was gonna ask you are gonna be around what you just said at the end of your presentation, which was, uh, thinking outside the box.
Okay.
So you had mentioned about, uh, employee compensation. It is a big situ- it's a big issue here. Um, obviously because of, uh, wage competition with other communities, especially others in Johnson County that have more money than, in their budgets than we do, we have to think outside the box. So you mentioned outs- outside the box thinking. Can you give me an example?
You know, that was, that's where we will all have to, to talk and come together, right? Trips maybe, I
Enhance vacation policy?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, uh, healthcare?
Healthcare.
Maybe, maybe some changes to healthcare.
Some sort of maybe housing stipend, I don't, you know, things like that, maybe.
Okay, all right. And then the other thing I had was, uh, about walkability. You mentioned downtown and walkability and being able to get from place to place. Um, would you be a, averse to, you know, ideas of thinking outside the box when it comes to putting in sidewalks and other kinds of pedestrian infrastructure?
No, that, that would be something that I think would be a challenge, but something that's needed. Yeah, that's something that's needed, so.
Okay, um, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right.
And if not appointed this evening, would you serve on other boards and committees?
Well, with my duties in the Legion and the Rotary, if the right fit came along, yes, I would, definitely.
All right, uh, and then John, you've got a one-minute closing statement?
Okay, as I said, um, Air Force veteran, served for my country as an air traffic controller. Service has always been a part of who I am. That's why I'm a member of Rotary. And I believe that's important because I have no agenda. It's just, well, I take that back. My agenda is to serve the public, not a special interest, not big business. It's to make sure the lives of the people here in Gardner are satisfied. You know, they moved here for a reason, let's keep them here. You know, let's keep them happy. Let's keep them to where people enjoy living here, tell their friends to move here. I mean, I, like I said, as a Realtor, I love telling people to come check out Gardner, I really do. So, that's it.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you, John. And our final applicant this evening, um, is gonna be joining us by Zoom. And Mr. Dennis Watson. Mr. Watson, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can right now, yes. If you speak into your microphones.
Perfect, thank you. Is it better?
Yes, that's good.
Uh, I'm not sure if you have a timer at home, so, uh, I'll try and give you a, a hand signal when we're about thirty seconds out if you need it. But, uh, you've got two minutes and if you'd like to introduce yourself and
I'm usually pretty brief.
Okay.
Um, I'm Dennis Watson. I've lived in Gardner, Kansas with my, my new bride for five years. Uh, we both lost our spouses and we met, uh, five years ago and, uh, we both had homes. So I sold my home in Olathe and moved here. Uh, been aware of, uh, Gardner, Kansas for many years. Uh, I served as a service technician for office equipment and often came to Gardner and even back in the eighties and I've always enjoyed, uh, being in this town and I enjoy living here. Um, one of the things that with, the question was, what are your attributes? Um, first, I just wanna say thank you for the, uh, mayor, uh, and council for giving us the opportunity to do this. Um, I've been involved in a variety of, uh, experiences. Uh, family life, academic life, military life, work life, uh, worked in inner cities. Um, had my own business for about three years back in the eighties. Um, so I see myself as able to work as part of a team member.
About thirty seconds.
Um, ability to communicate in a positive way. Um, I'm able to discern situations, uh, and what are the factors in the, in the situation. Have a high level of compassion for people and their situations. Um, have the ability to, uh, distill lots of information and come up to, uh, a reasonable decision about situations.
Okay, and Mr. Watson, that's, that's the two minutes. So you did well to keep the two minutes.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll go to your three questions. And the first question is, what are the three biggest issues facing the city in the next three years and what steps need to be taken to address them?
Okay, one of the big things that's just been on my mind lately personally, and I'm sure i- it's the same, uh, for a business, is this rising inflation. Uh, right now, it, they say it's at six point eight percent. And that's just the way it's recently accounted, but I'm sure it's much higher than that. Um, and this will decrease our purchasing power, uh, both as individuals and as a city. Uh, lot of uncertainty and polarity in this nation, uh, coming down from the federal government. And I'm concerned that, that it not intrude into our community. Um, there's an encroaching, um, warehouse district growing on our south side. Um, a lot of truck traffic into the city, uh, related to the intermodal. Um, some of these things are problematic for everybody. I don't probably the, the thing with the inflation is just to make sure our finances are in good shape. Uh, that we have a lot of hard assets, of course the city does, uh, which will be a help in, in, uh, overcoming the, the inflation problem.
About thirty seconds.
Okay, uh, and I see the new, um, development on South Gardner Road is a big Okay, uh, and I see the new, um, development on South Gardner Road is a big asset and a help with the intermodal traffic. Uh, providing a place for them to land instead of parking and driving through the city. And also the new, uh, regulations on truck traffic through the city. I appreciate that, and I'm sure there's other areas that we can, can, uh, work and manage in.
Thank you very much. Next question, identify three priorities of the city.
Well. Um. These are related to the strategic goals of the city, which are, of course, the promoting the economic development and, uh, the work that, that's been done and is in progress for, uh, housing, uh, which is in, uh, there's three or four developments. Uh, increasing the apartment housing and single family dwellings is very positive. Uh, also, the, uh, the push to invite businesses, uh, it's good to see the, you know, Freddy's and, and, uh, the, uh, other fast food areas, but I think it's been mentioned before, a great sit down restaurant would be a great asset to this city. Uh, and I, I really appreciate the businesses that are here now, but, you know, the, that, that would be one way to increase the, uh, the draw here as well. Uh, also, the, uh, quality of life. Um, I think it's really gonna be important to pay attention to that as, as a lot of people are losing employment. Uh, a lot of people are getting incentive to not work.
Thirty seconds.
And so, uh, as much as we can do to increase that, also the, uh, you know, managing our fiscal, fiscal, uh, statements and, uh, the fiscal situation, uh, income and outgoing, of course, is always a, a major, uh, strategy and priority.
Thank you very much. Uh, last question is, where do you see the city in five to ten years?
I really believe that, that we're gonna see a major in- influx of people. Uh, I see it coming from out of state, uh, from the coast, especially California, people are escaping, uh, the coastal areas. And this is prime, prime country for influx. People recognize the value of, of the Midwest and especially, uh, an area like Gardner, Kansas. I wouldn't be surprised if we had, uh, fifty percent growth in the next ten years, uh, just double the size of this, this, uh, population. So, of course, then that makes it important to, uh, at least have the infrastructure, uh, set that will, will allow for this kind of growth. So, I, I see that as a great, uh, possibility and, and as well as a great challenge. More, uh, there's a lot of high level, uh, skill level people out, uh, out of our area that would be moving here. And, uh, a lot of opportunities for new businesses and, um, you know, all kinds of growth and development. Uh, of course.
About thirty seconds.
If you, go ahead, if the infrastructure is not here, then it, it becomes more problematic.
Thank you, okay, well, we'll move on to some council questions.
Okay, well, my standard question is, uh, what makes you interested now for the position versus running, uh, this past November?
Good question. Uh, I have had no, no experience in running any kind of a political campaign. And, uh, a friend of mine suggested, why don't you run for city council? Uh, I thought, uh, I don't know about that, but, uh, when I saw the ad in the paper or the, just the notice, I'd say, well, here's an opportunity to serve and to, um, uh, to be a part of, of our, our city and have a voice. And so, uh, here I am, um.
Okay. That's it. Thank you, um, and then my last question is, uh, it says you, you attended a city council meeting, what else have you done to prepare yourself, uh, if you were appointed to this role?
Okay, uh, the question is, my attendance at the city council meetings has been my main preparation, just to hear and see how this, uh, council operates. Um. When I saw the notice in the paper, that was the first time I had any consideration of being a part of it. And so, there's not been a lot of, uh, preparation, I, I went to your website and read most of it to just get a kind of a hint of, of the type of, uh, structure and, uh, the way the city operates, and I'm very, very pleased to, to be a part of that. Uh, I would be pleased to, um, function within that, and I think one thing I put on my application is I'm teachable.
Thank you.
Alright, we're diving deep here, okay, so, um, question, the question I had for you is, and I, I, I've read through your application and, uh, you gave me some, some very insightful answers on the application. Uh, you mentioned a couple of the items that are more macro in nature when it comes to, uh, concerns or threats with regard to, um, the city of Gardner. Um, having served in the, in the chief executive seat in the past, I can probably tell you that you're not too far off on that, but what would you do to protect the city of Gardner from encroachment by the federal government?
Good question. I think the promotion of unity within the city and a, a matter of unity upon the council itself of drawing together. Uh, I think it's gonna be very, uh, demanding upon the state and upon city governments to hold the line against, uh, mandates from the federal government. Um, I believe, I understand there's such a thing as home rule and our local, uh, law enforcement, local government has a great deal of impact upon what we do locally. And, uh, I believe in that, I believe that we, if we can band together, then, uh, we have a great deal of, uh, opportunity to, to set the, set the standard, to maintain our, our way of life. I've, I believe it's gonna be a, a struggle to be able to do that, and if we're committed to that, I believe if we can stand together, uh, we have a better chance of, of actually, uh, maintaining a more, uh, way of life than what we, everybody wants safety and prosperity for their family, uh, good schools, all of these things. If we can stand strong, uh, together about we want, then I believe that we'll have a better chance of maintaining the lifestyle that we want.
Okay, and the second question I had was, you mentioned, uh, some pretty optimistic, uh, population estimates, which aren't, not necessarily that far off. I, I think that we definitely are on a growth curve that's pretty positive. Um, but let's say that this, that the city grows fifty percent, gets up to about thirty-six thousand, uh, individuals, um, within the next ten years. Um, how do you, how do you maintain the feel, the character of our community when you bring in that many people into the city?
I'm sure that will be a, uh, a very strong challenge for us. Um, I think some of the suggestions that have been mentioned already is, is to maintain a good, uh, city center. Um, promote the development of the downtown area as a, uh, commercial and, uh, business center, uh, convenience center, uh, a place to, to gather, the development of the parks, uh, open spaces for community. Uh, if there's ways, of course, to develop the housing areas where, uh, it doesn't seem to be crowded, uh, keep open space and green space in our, uh, new housing areas, uh, I'm sure that will help. And just have a sense of, uh, maintaining families, uh, and community communication. If there's ways also of making sure that the people that move in feel like that they have a say in what happens in our community, and I believe, uh, just the fact that you have open, we have open forum right there at every, uh, city council meeting will allow people to speak their, their concerns and, and as, um, council members have an ear within the community, to be able to hear what people are saying and to communicate it to one another, uh, will be a great asset.
Thank you, uh, Dennis, appreciate your answers.
And if you're not appointed this evening, would you be willing to serve on other boards and committees?
I would, uh, I would look at that possibility, yes, matter of fact, I looked at the, the different commissions and, uh, with an idea of what would I be interested in, I'd, I'd have to look at that some more, but, uh, I, I would be definitely interested in, in serving in some, someplace within the, the city for sure, uh, cause that's who I am, I, I serve.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, um, Mr. Watson, we do offer one minute for a closing statement.
You know, just thinking about the city of Gardner, um, I was just impressed by the fact that when I got here, I started noticing, I'd been aware that this region was a, uh, drop off point for the different trails to the west and, uh, that it, that it's, actually, it's kind of a hub. And, and then just looking at the intermodal, that's a major hub there, and I believe that this city, uh, within itself can be a hub of, of business and activity and, um, I'm very, uh, positive about this city. And the word Gardner itself includes the word garden, and I believe this is a growing, thriving place. If we continue to plant the seeds and cultivate it and water it and, um, you know, just take care of it.
Thank you, thank you, I like that, I like to be in the hub. Okay, so that includes our, uh, our interviews and, uh, you know, I, I wanna say thank you to everyone who came, and I know it's, it's not an easy thing to do, to get up and, and speak and, and, uh, get grilled by some of these, uh, council people up here, but, uh, um, we've got some great candidates, absolutely, and, you know, I think the other thing that's always, I appreciate is, is we get five different views of Gardner, five different, um, ideas, five different thoughts and, and things we can do moving forward, so I always get some information from it as well. So I appreciate everyone coming tonight. So, uh, next step then is we will, uh, everyone should have, all council people should have their ranking sheet. And we will rank them, uh, one through five, and again, one would be your top candidate. And when we're done, we will provide those to the city clerk.
Please put your name at the top.
And then the city clerk will, will tally these up and she'll provide these to our, to Mr. Dank. For verification.
You can say Esquire.
And again, uh, just reminder, if, if there is consensus with, um, majority, the top pick, we will not go into the second phase, so.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
If we, uh, have a, obviously, we would have a selection this evening, will we swear them in this evening?
Yes, uh, there'd be, then we would be looking for a nomination in a second.
Yes.
Swear them in, and if we got that and, and it was, it was approved, then yes, we would swear them in this evening.
Um, if the winner happens to be on the Zoom call, would that be complicating?
That's a very good question.
I'm just asking. No, we're not, okay, we could actually swear them in virtually? Okay, great.
We might wanna get some music. Yeah, Jeopardy. Steve, you can sing.
Well, I'm not doing it.
I'm not doing it.
You know you want to, Steve.
No, no.
I, I let you explain to Antonio Brown. Oh, gosh. Guys, it's our case.
So being, being native Floridian, I'm a Tampa Bay Buccaneer fan, they're giving me a hard time over Antonio Brown over here.
So if we lose, you don't want us to rip our shirt off and throw it away?
No, no, don't rip your shirt off and give us the peace sign on the way out the door, please, it's, uh.
It could spice things up.
It might, it might. I can just, I can just imagine the Gardner News articles on that. Okay, Ryan, do we need a drum roll? Okay.
Just checking my math. I'm in English degree, I don't.
You should text the math.
It's true.
Yeah, maybe we should switch it.
You and your spreadsheets, uh, Mark, I mean.
I've got this. This calls for a spreadsheet.
Ooh, I need that.
Got Mark written on it.
That does.
Yeah.
This is new.
We didn't do this last time.
It's very transparent, it's good, I like it. Think the mayor did it last time.
Okay, um, looks like we do have a consensus, uh, majority have chosen their top candidate, and so we will not need to go to the second phase. Um, so the top candidate chosen, uh, with three number one choices was Eric Potter. Excellent. So, um, that being said, do I have a motion to nominate Eric Potter?
So moved.
Uh, second.
So motion Baldwin, Baldwin, second shoot, we nominate Eric Potter to the city council seat with a term expiring in December twenty twenty-three. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, abstained? Congratulations, Mr. Potter.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would, uh, just, uh, point of personal privilege, uh, Mayor. I, I would, I would love, I, I wanna thank everybody who came into the room, who, who put themselves out there for this interview process. Please consider joining a committee, um, if you've not been a part of committee, please do so. Um if you've not been a part of a committee, please do so. Um and it allows you to get your chops, allows you to get your your experience up with regard to how the city works and what happens, um kind of behind the scenes in some of our departments. Um it's a huge deal. And if you haven't gone to Gardner U, I think we're going to have some Gardner U or replacement um coming at some point, uh basically our our city, our city academy. Uh when we start doing those again, we put them off for COVID, but when we start doing those again, please uh please sign up and be a part of that.
Yes, uh so I believe how they're swearing it now.
That's correct. We can do it here.
Right there, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Potter, would you like to join me up here?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand and uh repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eric Potter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
As council member for the city of Gardner, Kansas.
As council member for the city of Gardner, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll be standing there until we have our. We're not, we're not pulling the trap money here.
So you get to jump right into uh some more new business.
Steve.